This is the town council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, taking place in the Town Council chambers at seven, looks like 7:10. Let's start with a salute to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Michelle.
Mayor Bethel.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Judy. Councilor Downs.
Here.
Councilor Fawnen.
Here.
Councilor Gold.
Here.
And Councilor Paliccia.
Here.
Okay, that's the ministers of previous meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before you get into your regular meeting, the representatives of local festival are here, as we mentioned and talked about, doing a drawing. I think before you get into the flow of your meeting, you might want to just pause and allow them to do four drawings and then we can jump into the meeting. So Jen?
Yeah? Jen?
Okay, so the blue is our taste of technology. There's keys, there's a set of keys in here. This is the taste of North Branford, so this is gift cards to 32 restaurants in town. You're going to pick the top two prizes, so the first one is going to get $1,600 in gift cards to local restaurants.
Okay. Not supposed to look.
No looking. Go ahead, read it out loud. Who do we have?
Jen Farrar.
All right, Jen Farrar. Okay, this one is for $800 in gift cards to local restaurants.
Do I have one?
Yes, one.
Renee O'Connor.
All right. Jen Farrar, Renee O'Connor. Oh, look. Oh. Okay, and this is for hurries and mineries in the area, including the ones that we have here in North Branford, so the top prize is $1,000 in gift cards, and the second will be 500 in gift cards. Do you want to do these ones, too?
One for now.
Drop them.
Oh, that should be the winner.
Not even looking at his name.
Good, huh?
All right. All right, Michael Standish.
And Crystal Champagne.
Crystal Champagne. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
By the way, you guys did a great job with this.
Thank you, thank you. We were very excited. We were able to purchase all the gift cards from the local businesses, which we thought was really important during COVID as well, so kind of giving back to them in that way.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, let's do the ministers of previous meeting, May 4th, 2021, WPCA and Town Council.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? You have a vote, Michelle?
Well, a favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Okay, let's move into the regular Town Council meeting. Reports and committees, boards and commissions, first is Economic Development Commission.
There was no meeting since the last, our last council meeting. I know they have a presentation later in the agenda.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we have Parks and Rec.
They had a special meeting last night in regards to some line item transfers, which are later in the meeting, those agenda items.
Police Commission.
Okay, the Police Commission met on May 10th. Meeting began with a ceremony, which was very nice, awarding certificates and citations of commendation to many of the officers that have gone above and beyond the call of duty. Another important thing was that Lieutenant Sperry is retiring as of June 30th, that was recognized. It was a long discussion about ATVs. We're having a real problem in town, as many towns are having, and these kids are so brazen in what they're doing, and as you know, the police can't chase after them, but they're hoping that maybe at some point there could be an ordinance in the future that would be able to at least find some of these kids for what's happening to us, but it seems to be, but it's not just North Branford, it seems to be all over. There is also a possibility in the state legislature that maybe they'll change the requirement in terms of how, the size of a town, in terms of when they can confiscate the ATV.
That's a big, I know that's a big issue.
It's all over, it's not just North Branford.
Yeah, I think the limit right now is 20,000.
Yes, right, I think it is.
So they can't even confiscate, even if they know, because we aren't.
The other, the other important issue is a budget issue, and I know it's on the agenda tonight, and in your packet, you have this sheet, and we will obviously go over this later on, but there is a problem with overtime, and you know, the causes of overtime are for many reasons. First of all, you have the two storms, you have the fact that you had a lot more traffic control in the schools because of COVID. You remember when, beginning when parents were taking, you know, there were lines and lines of traffic, you know, in the streets and whatever. There's an officer on FMLA, you have a vacancy, so overall, there is a, there is a problem here, but also there's a question and a need for some more overtime money, and we'll talk about that later on. And that's, that's my report.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Marie. Fire Commission is next.
I was unable to make the meeting this month, so I have no report.
Okay. Next, we have Board of Education, Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
No meeting.
All right, next is North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
That's kind of over right now.
Yeah, that one can come off, because that, that moved over to permanent project.
All right, we'll take, we'll take it off for the next. Next is Finance Subcommittee.
There was no meeting, our next one is June, in June.
Okay, next we have Permanent Project Billing Committee, Rusty, well, he's not here.
Yeah, we have, I put at your seats his report, it's out there, for Rusty's report, and I can just kind of encapsulate, if I can, the meeting last night of the permanent project building committee was productive, and everything's moving forward. You see the highlights, Rusty and his design team are moving through, trying to hit the 95% completion by June 14th, and they've got to meet with PCR and the state on July 6th. They have a meeting with P&amp;Z on the agenda for the 20th this week, and going through several other items that they're, they're working through. We have on the agenda tonight, as a result of their meeting last night and their recommendation for the approval of RFQP 13 material testing and RFQP 15 independent third-party code review. It was anticipated that we were going to have a third RFQP number 16, but that was not within the budget, collapsing that, that's going back out on the street, yes, tomorrow, and that'll be coming back around, we'll have to redo it, go back out, so it'll be coming back around for the June 1st meeting. If everything all works out well, we'll, we'll be able to do that. So there was, you know, discussion about energy and generator, and there's information in there in Rusty's report, and it also includes breakdown for his analysis for RFQP 13 and 15. Actually, just 13, and I have the information on 15.
Okay. All right, that covers all three of them, Mike?
Yeah, you know, we're, we're going to probably take off and remove MBIS unless the council objects, because that's being, obviously going to move to a 2022 timeframe, in terms of that.
Yeah. I would, I would think that's okay.
And if, if the council would like, as the, the Police Department project, they have a site walk Thursday, the bid is out on the street, so if you'd like an update specifically from Silver Petroselli, I can invite them to the next meeting in, in June, if you think that would be helpful and appropriate.
What time's that site walk, Mike?
I want to say it's 10? 10, yes. But I can get you info on that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Just a quick one.
Okay.
I just, I see John Florio in the back. Are you here for a specific item on the agenda, John, or are you just, okay. All right.
Just visiting?
I didn't know if he was with any of the projects, because I know he goes to the building committee meetings, so I didn't know if he had anything for that, so.
Okay. Next, we have Town Manager's Report, update on COVID-19 testing and vaccine.
Yes, so you actually have the report I put in the packet for May 13, and it's interesting how the numbers can move, and basically, what I wanted to show you were that the numbers aren't, aren't bad, but if you look at the, the first one in comparison, the number I want to highlight for you is the fact that our ranking in the state at the time was on, I think on the, it's like the third page, where it's in red, shows North Branford's ranking, state ranking, as of 5/6, May 6th, was 51st, and the, the new one that I gave you should be at your desk, dated May 14th, on the second page, you'll see we've, we've climbed as high as 115, and so a higher number is much better, 169 towns in Connecticut, so we went from 51 up to 115, so that's a significant jump, significant trend that I hope is going to continue and bear out as, as a sort of reflection of our vaccination rates, and positivity has stabilized at 3.8, so hopefully, even in the next report, I would expect that that number's going lower as you look at a comparison to the state positivity rate, and again, it fluctuates, but the trend looks good at this point, so there's a whole lot of data, other data in there in terms of ages and so forth, and if there's any specific questions, I can certainly try to answer those, or get an answer from the Health Department, but there's quite a bit of indicators that, that show that we're trending in the right direction.
Mike, is the town doing anything, Senior Center or the school, they still giving vaccinations, or is that over?
At this point, no, I, I think there might be some follow-ups, but I know Jess has stepped out to finish up, but yeah, we're still, we're still working on, on doing a few follow-up.
20 seconds.
20 seconds, if I'm the next one.
Just a second.
Yeah, thank you, Anthony. Yeah, and again, we're still working in a, in a smaller population of the individuals that we're trying to get into the home, the homebound population, we're still trying to evaluate and look at where we are, and we've done, we've made significant inroads, but we're, we're not sure we're getting to identify everyone, we may, you know, so we keep looking at that to try and make sure that we don't miss anyone, those are, those are the hard, harder individuals to coordinate, but we are making inroads in that area as well.
So with the mandates changing tomorrow, the state mandates and everything with mask and everything, how is that affected, like for department, like Park and Rec, I know with opening up the Senior Center and stuff like that, town buildings and stuff, are, are we abiding by the mask?
Yeah, I, I think we're gonna, what I'm gonna, what we're doing is scheduled, we've got a staff meeting tomorrow to go through and, and talk about the guidance from the state and potential strategy for the, for the rollout, and I, my understanding is the state's going to give us that latitude and through the Health Department to design our own rollout, what we, what we think makes sense for North Branford, and so I'm going to get the input of, of department heads tomorrow and look at guidance from the state and the Health Department, and, and put together a rollout piece that makes sense for us. And again, what, what sounds like from the state, that if you're vaccinated and, and you know, you, you can then indoor, remove your, your mask and the social distancing, so I just want to confirm that with Michael at, at E-Sure. So again, I'm not sure what other concerns the staff might have, but that's what we're going to go through tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike, is there anyone that's in, in the town that's not coming to work right now because of COVID?
No, everybody?
Everybody's working?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Unless they're on a, unless they're on a medical or something like that.
Does percent of population vaccinated mean population eligible for vaccination, vaccinated, or total population? Or do you know? But it says percent of population vaccinated, does that mean percent of total population, or percent of those who are eligible for vaccination?
I think that's percent of, of total population.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, Terrell, the next sheet, I was kind of questioning that myself. The next sheet has breakdown by age groups.
Oh, there we go, all right.
Okay, next we have Economic Development Project Presentation by Michael Belafonte, Pines of Northford.
Yes, so we have Michael Belafonte here and his team, here to present on an economic development project. We're going to use an overhead projector, and I'm going to pop that up right now, and then try to have some Q and A, and just to set up, this is, I, I think, a very important and interesting opportunity for economic development, and the reason it's on the council, I think, in order for you to get an opportunity to question the developer, and the, the tie-in to sewer is an important piece of this project, and obviously, that falls to, at this level, the council serving at a, as the water pollution control authority, so just wanted you to be aware of it and have an opportunity to meet everyone tonight.
You come up to the mic if you'd like.
10 a.m.
I have a being spread out.
Okay. Make sure you can hear me.
Well, that microphone is so that the people watching can hear, but so maybe they can bring it back to you.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, thank you, Town Council. My name's Michael Belafonte, I'm the owner of the Belafonte Companies. This is my associate, John Malone, and my associate, Mark Ferlenza, who also works with us. John's an engineer and owner of, owner and founder of Malone and McBroom, and I'd like to also say that this is our third or fourth meeting here. We've met with EDC and several of the other groups and stakeholders, so this is kind of a big show for us in front of the full council, so we're very excited about it, and very excited about the project. I'd like to just start by saying also that my dad was a principal at Jerome Harrison School and Stanley T., so I have deep roots in, in North Branford. I'm also the developer of the Northford Ice Pavilion, here in, here, right here in Northford, which, right on 22, right here, the subject property, so I'm sure you're all familiar with that. The Ice Pavilion has brought in an enormous amount of business to the town, I think the town's very happy with the relationship and the partnership, but I did want to mention that as well. We'll go right to the slide. Okay, I guess I have 15 minutes, so I'm gonna. Okay, great. So the agenda tonight is company overview, community description, zoning and fiscal impact, sewer connection discussion, and conclusion. Slide. Okay. We're a full-service real estate investment and development company, I founded the company over 30 years ago, we've done over $2 billion in transaction, we own about 3,000 apartment units and about 600,000 feet of commercial, we've owned properties in 14 different states and internationally, we've done some big joint ventures with names such as Heinz and the Carlisle Group, which are household names, we have about 120 employees. Slide. This is the land, and this is our latest project, it's called the Landin at Cromwell, we're 85% completed, we got, we opened yesterday our sales office, and we have actually five units leased already after 24 hours. That is a rendering in the top left-hand corner, the pool has not been built yet, site plan to the right, but that is an actual photo where it says leasing office, that is, that has been built, and I welcome anyone to come and take a look, and we'd love to tour you, give you a tour of the property, we're very proud of it, and this is similar construction in terms of what we want to build here in Northford on Route 22. Slide. This is a project we're doing with Heinz International up in Boston, it's on Ocean Avenue and Revere, actually, near the Wonderland Station, it's approximately an $80 million project, and we're breaking ground in October of this year. Slide. This is a, a letter of support from, from Honeywell, and I, I have packages here for everybody, so this whole slide presentation will be in a package, so you could take your time and, and read the letter, but it's from Dick Bauer, basically saying the need for apart, telling about the need for apartments in North Branford, how he could use apartments for his full and part-time employees, and just basically a letter supporting the project. Slide. Same thing with this, a slide from Brooke and Whittle, a supporting letter, we own the facility in Guilford on Goose Lane, where Brooke and Whittle is now, and they're, they're backing the project also, because they, they need housing as well. Slide. This is a support letter from Mike Frida, a separate town, obviously, but showing the positive, telling about the positive, positive financial impact that apartments have brought to the town, how they've helped Quinipiac University, and how they've helped the Amazon employees as well. Slide. This is the site plan, actually, not the site plan, but the survey toe, this is an aerial of where the project would go. You can see the parking lot in the lower part of the slide, that's the Honeywell parking lot, and to the left is the ice rink, you can see the roof of the ice rink, that, that's showing two rinks, you can see a little bit of the third rink, so in terms of neighborhood disruption, there really isn't any, it's in a great location in terms of not bothering any of the neighbors, and, you know, it's in a secluded area, so we think it's ideal for an apartment community. Slide. So this is the overview of the proposed community, we have 120 apartment homes, 61 bedrooms, 62s that are proposed, it's a three-story residential building, five buildings, 191 parking spaces, we have an amenitized clubhouse and walking trails, it's going to have 24-hour maintenance, two, two full-time people, almost like a concierge service, marketing, market is a segment, market segment is renter by choice, which basically means people that want to rent, that either sold their house, or don't want to pay a mortgage, or want to live in North Branford, and actually, people that are renters by choice, and there's a lot of, as you know, flight from the urban centers because of COVID and a lot of other reasons, and people want to kind of move towards the country and towards the suburbs. Slide. This, this is the actual site plan from an aerial perspective, so you can see where the buildings are, you see the pool in the middle, the building to the far right is where our community room is, leasing office, as well as where the, as well as apartments in that building. Slide. This is basically the clubhouse of the, of the Pines in Northford, that's what we're proposing, so you have three entryways, the middle entryway would be for the community room, for the leasing center, for the gym, for like a WeWork space, and then the other two entrances on each side that are flanking that center entrance are the entrances of the apartments. Slide. So our plan is basically consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development, the POCD that actually the Town of Northford commissioned, and we kind of basically maintained all the requests that this POCD had, in addition, this, this piece of property was basically targeted by POCD for apartment development. Slide. These are comparable multifamily densities in the area, Parker Place is in Wallingford, three, 34 units per acre, that's 313 units, the Flats, which is right in front of Quinipiac on Route 5, 32 units per acre, 126 apartments, Canal Crossing in Hampden, that's 24 per acre, 393 units, and then Founder's Village in Branford, Connecticut, 21.8 per acre, 120 apartments. As you can see, the Pine, it's at the bottom, 18.75 per acre, now, of course, there are other communities that are less in density, what we wanted to show here, and what we wanted to emphasize, is that there are plenty of communities that are more dense than what we're proposing. Slide. This is the fiscal impact slide and revenue, so we estimate the property taxes once, once this is built, and this isn't asking for any abatement, our Cromwell project, we're getting an abatement on that from property taxes, we're not asking the Town of Northford for any abatement at all, we're looking at estimated tax revenue of about $250,000, personal property taxes in terms of vehicles, about 63, permitting fees is a one-time, one-time fee, but the, the first two should generate revenues of about $300,000 plus per year for the Town of Northford, which is, goes to the grand list and goes to revenues for the town. Slide. Okay, so this was a study that was done by Rutgers in terms of proposed development based on this student, this is the student analysis, and cost per student based on fiscal year 2019 budget is about $18,000, but we don't expect very many students to be at this project at all, so it's minimal increased costs to the community, most costs in this project are going to be paid by the owners, including maintenance, infrastructure, rubbish and recycling, so you don't have to pick up the trash, very few annual calls for law enforcement or fire departments, so it's a very, very small strain on the infrastructure compared to the taxes that we're paying. Slide. So this is the current sewer charges that you have, and right now, we're looking at, well, this is the current sewers, you have 80,000 gallons per day to service this project, we expect the one bedrooms to generate about 6,255 gallons, the two bedrooms, 10,000 gallons, so you're looking at a total of 16,000, however, we are already, we had a project in front of the town for H-H restricted housing, and that was for 4,500 gallons per day, so the net is really 11,835, that's all we're asking for, really, in addition, which goes against your, you know, 80,000 gallons per day that you already have in capacity, extra capacity. This is the current sewer hookup fees, right now, Northford is charging 12,300, which is very disparate compared to other communities, if you look below, and in addition to that, we've already proposed 2,500 per unit, which equates to 300,000, and that's our request to the town, but if you look at Rocky Hill, you know, you're looking at 1,650, you're looking at Cromwell, 3,000, New Haven, 500 to 1,000, Southington, 500, East Haven, 500 to 1,000, Hampden, 500 to 1,000, Cheshire, 500 to 1,000, and Wallingford, 636, so you can see how disparate the sewer hookup fee is, as it relates to the rest of, the rest of communities that are surrounding Northford, so that's something we're requesting that the Town of Northford works on, to get that, to get that lowered. Slide. This is the conclusion to the Pines, so basically, the grand list of the Town of North Haven will increase by over $300,000 annually. The Pines community is consistent with the POCD, the Plan of Conservation and Development of the Town of North Branford, we made it consistent with that, there's no strain on town infrastructure or school system. There's no strain on town infrastructure or school system. New housing opportunities for residents of North Bramford and the surrounding businesses. Residents of the Pines will purchase goods and services from local businesses. There is a strong support for the Pines by two of the largest employers of North Bramford, Honeywell and Brooke and Whittle. So all in all, I think it's a fantastic project. We're just trying to get some support from the council. And I open it to any questions.
Are there children allowed in these apartments?
Yes, absolutely.
How, when you say no strain to the town infrastructure of the school system?
I have an earlier slide there that shows the Rutgers study. So since it's just ones and two bedrooms, there's not three bedrooms, you know, you might, you'll have some kids. I mean, there's no question. I think it's 12, if I recall. Is it 12 more?
Seven.
Seven, seven kids. So seven kids, and that's the calculation for the whole complex. And we can show you that study. So we don't expect a lot of kids at all.
I have two questions. What are the, what are your estimated, I know it's going to, it'll change depending on square footage and bedrooms, but what are you looking to rent these for, how much?
Approximately a dollar eighty a foot. So that would be, you know, $1,800 for a two-bedroom. That was 1,000 square feet, approximately. This is, you know, a luxury community. It'll be amenitized with a pool and with a gym and with walking trails and, you know, a dog park, a dog wash. We're pet-friendly. It's, it'll be a very good caliber of people that move in here.
And we've been, we've heard anyhow that there'll be a strong connection to Honeywell.
Yeah, so Honeywell has a bunch of training people come in where they bring them in for one, two, three weeks at a time. And we talked to Dick about setting up some of the units as corporate apartments where we'll furnish them. And then Honeywell will actually do a master lease, like on maybe six to 12 units. And then they can move their employees in and out, as opposed to putting them in a hotel down the street, and then they could walk, you know, walk to the training sessions. Dick also believes that you're going to get a lot of people that actually work there. There's 900 people that work at Honeywell now. And a lot of them are engineers and, you know, tech people and data people. So these are the target, actually, for these people. By the way, the manufacturers could live there also. I mean, I think they would come within that, you know, come within our band of income. That's necessary to rent here.
Thank you.
Sure.
So theoretically, so there is, there is how many units, 120 total?
120, yeah.
So, so, and 62-bedroom?
And 61s.
Right. So theoretically, there could be 60 children easily, right?
Theoretically, you know, there could be 120 kids, yes, if everybody has a kid. But it's not a, it's not geared to, it's not a, it's not geared to a kid community, if you will. It's really active adults. You're going to have a lot of empty nesters. That's what we're finding out at Cromwell, which is very similar. So people have sold their houses, you know, want to downsize. I bet we'll get about 50% empty nesters. And then you get, you know, young professionals, people working at Yale, people working at Quinnipiac, people working at Amazon. And it's a much better setting than like some of the stuff on Route 5 that you've noticed, you know, where the flats is one of them. I mean, it's, it's good housing, don't get me wrong, but this is, you know, completely different product. This is a luxury product. So you're really not going to have very many kids at all.
Some of the other projects that you noted out there, how long have you owned those for?
Well, I've, I've been in business over 30 years. Some of the projects I've owned for approximately 25, 28, 27 years. We own Hampden Center One in downtown across from where the police station was, the big gray office building, I don't know if you're familiar with that. We have properties in Enfield, Connecticut, Southington, Connecticut, Torrington, Connecticut.
What I'm, what I'm kind of getting at is, you plan on building this and owning this long-term, or do you want to fill it up and then flip?
No, no, I don't, I don't really, I rarely sell. No, the answer is we want to buy it and we want to own it and manage it and keep, keep working it, for sure. Our intent is not to sell. Anyone else? Anything else?
What's your timeframe? I mean, what are you looking at?
Well, you know, we would, we would like to be approved, you know, by the end of the year, I would say, if possible. And then it would take approximately a year to build it. And then we would, you know, start leasing after that. We move very quickly. We use a company, Cromwell, called Associated Construction. They're bondable of up to, I believe, $400 million. We have not missed a beat on our Cromwell project. I'd really like you to see it. If anyone else, you know, we could get a bus or something. If you guys would like to come up there, it's really special. And this is, this will be comparable in construction.
How did you arrive at the number you gave us for projecting children as occupants that leave the school system?
I'm going to have Mark.
So what happens is, I'm, this is Mark Prolenza. Just a quick background, I probably built about $2 billion worth of multifamily construction over my career. I ran Avalon Bay communities in the northeast, you know, for almost 20 years. So what Michael was referring to is something called these Rutgers, Rutgers multipliers or Rutgers studies. And what Rutgers University does is they survey all the luxury apartment communities throughout the, throughout the country. And they come up with multipliers based upon rent level and based upon, you know, bedroom size. So for a one-bedroom, they'll assign a multiplier of almost zero for school-age kids. Now, not toddlers. You always, you always get toddlers, but at the time someone's ready to, those toddlers are, you know, getting older, someone's already sort of buying the house sort of in the area, which makes the, as a secondary effect, makes the secondary market also very healthy. And then for two bedrooms, they have, they have another multiplier. So the seven school-age kids that we're projecting is coming from the 62 bedrooms. And then you can just easily do the math, 70 over 60, that's sort of the multiplier that they use for two bedrooms. So that's how we're coming up with the, with the estimate of seven school-age kids. And those are usually distributed over, you know, every, every grade, usually more to the younger side. So we might have three school-age kids from, you know, one, grade one to grade eight, and three or four in high school, so sort of like that. So there's no one big impact on any school or any grade. So that's when you look at sort of the average cost of 2019 of $19,000 per school-age children. That, that contains a lot of fixed costs, a lot of overhead costs. Doesn't really, doesn't really think how the incremental cost of the student, which is substantially less. That's why I think Michael's saying that we'd do less, you know, the less strain on the sort of, sort of school.
Your numbers are correct. Simple math is correct. You use $19,000, which is your number, and seven children, that's $132,000. And that's what you're, you're projecting $240,000, trillion of the building.
Yeah, so, so in that 19, in that 19,000.
300,000. With cars.
Yeah, but in that 19,000, there's a lot of fixed costs that don't move with, with kids, right? So there's, there's a principle, there's a, there's a superintendent, there's, there's payments on the buildings. That, that doesn't move when you add, add a charge.
I'm just kind of underwhelmed at your numbers in terms of projected income to the town, the net income. If we send a police car there five times in a year and educate 10 kids, it's getting to a point where we're supporting your community.
Just wondering, again, maybe mention just some of the other benefits, too. You know, you're not having to deal with a snowplow, you're not having to deal with trash, you're not having to deal with recycling, you're not, you're not having to deal with any of the landscaping. So I think that our studies show that it's definitely a net, a net positive for the community, not to mention the goods and services that these people will buy from the local I also have an article, I'll just tell you about it. It's a, this was pre-COVID, it's 2019. But it basically reveals that the apartment multifamily industry and its residents annually contribute more than 3.4 trillion to the national economy. We just need a little sliver of that. But I put that in your package as well. So in the package, I have the PowerPoint presentation, I have the letters from Honeywell, I have the letter from Brooke and Whittle, and the letter from Mike Frida, basically attesting to the positive fiscal impact that North Haven has had because of the apartments. I want to thank everybody for giving us the opportunity. And I say this with all my heart, if you let us go forward with this project, you'll be proud of it. And it'll be done first class with the best materials, and it'll be a great project for the community.
Just one more quick question.
Sure.
Was it interplay between 40 senior units in this project? Did I hear that right?
No, well, yes, if you want to, depending on how you use, how you use interplay. So we originally had it approved for age-restricted. And unfortunately, the market just did not warrant it.
I see you not be doing.
No, no, not at all. We actually had to abandon that because the, the cost of construction was higher than what we could sell it for.
Okay.
And so that's, but thank you for the question. Well, thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the, I think you picked up on the fact that this is a sewer impact and the request is to become the sewer, sewer fee. So I think, talking with Kurt today, there is, actually, I think Michael indicated that half of the 80,000 is actually more to 100,000, I think is what Kurt found out then. But it's really not about the, sorry.
You might want to mention that Mike Frida.
Yeah, and so, again, it's going to come down to the council and whether or not you're comfortable with addressing that request, because it's considerably less than what currently is on the books at 12,300, I think, in terms of tie-in. And so the capacity for North Haven is there. There wouldn't, according to the mayor, there wouldn't be any connection or cost for the excess capacity, to buy excess capacity. It would just be an immediate flow for that project. But if they're going to go forward, it's ultimately going to come to the council at some point on whether or not you stick with the $12,300 connection fee, or if you go through a process, which I believe would require a public hearing in order to look at some sort of reduction based on multiple units. And whether you decide it's 20, threshold of 20 units, anything over 30 units gets a reduction rate of 20. But the council would have to walk through that process, I guess, a parallel process once you begin your application.
I don't know what the exact hookup cost is, but at 20, what we, what we offered was 2,500 a unit, which was higher than the surrounding municipalities, which is $300,000 as a, as a one-time cost. I don't think it costs the town anywhere near the 300,000. So I think you're making money on that as well, besides the building permits, which is, you know, a one-time fee. So you have the hookup fees, you have the building permit fees, and then you have the annual revenues of the property taxes as well as the car, personal property taxes. So I, you know, I encourage you to read the Mike Frida letter, and you're going to see that he's very pleased with his decision to go forward with the apartments. Most of these people are, and I say these people, most towns are, remember, apartments weren't, weren't in vogue for many, many years. And everyone was afraid of the kids and afraid of the infrastructure and afraid of everything. And it's gradually come around where people understand that it's really not, it's really a net benefit for the town, any development like this.
One last question, just to Joe's point and what you're saying. You said the best parallel between what you want to build in Northford is probably Cromwell, correct?
Yes, I would say, yes.
And how many units are in Cromwell?
160.
All right. And how many children currently live there?
Well, we just, just started leasing yesterday.
Oh, that's right.
We have five units with no kids so far. And that's not an indication, but five, five units rented, no kids, and two pets. That's as of today. But we can keep you posted on that, for sure.
Is that Cromwell development near that condo area in, near the middle?
No, it's actually, I offered 372 on Country Squire Drive. It was the old Nike radar base. And it was laying follow-up at the top of this knoll for like 50 years, whenever they abandoned the Nike, Nike base. And the town wanted something done there. So we named it the Landon, which is an old English name for High Mountain Plateau. And it looks terrific, the views are fantastic. It's the highest point in Cromwell. It's really special. We did a really good job, so. We can get a bus, Mike, if you want. We can have everyone come up and see it, if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, cool. I'll talk to the member that way.
Okay. Great. Thank you again for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Chair Michael Cio.
Okay, next we have community events and presentations. There's none. Next is citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. Okay, next we have resignations and appointments. There's, I believe, there's none.
I just have a question, what the status is. We talked about it at the last meeting of the permanent project building committee member that wanted to go to an alternate.
What?
I don't think we've heard anything.
Well, no, the discussion was that he verbally said he wanted to go to, and you were going to send him a letter.
Right.
So did that happen?
I believe it did. I did not check, check with Michelle on that.
Okay.
Or this Michelle. I think it has to go from the clerk. But I'll, I'll check on that.
Okay, now, I'll check with Michelle. Yeah, if you could just check on that so that at the next meeting, we can move one of the alternates to the, to be a permanent member on there. That was the whole promise of that.
Okay.
Also, just, just, I was talking to Marie Diamond, I had a thought on that as well. And in my mind, and tell me if I'm wrong, but the permanent project building committee had two members from the Police Department Commission serving on the Police Department Building Project, one of which has now been elevated, Victor, to alternate member. So David is there as, David Colombo is the second member, and is coming to the meeting and is a participating member. Wouldn't it, would it not be appropriate for the Police Commission, if they wanted to, to send another name to be the second person on that?
Well, I, I'm not sure how this works, because as an alternate, Victor doesn't have a vote most of the time, if they have a full committee.
Right.
But if he's there as Police Department, for Police Department, he would have a vote on there. So I'm not exactly sure how all of that works.
I'll, I'll see if, well, I'll talk to Ben and talk to Lisa, if she's had past experience with that, with that. It's just, I'm just reading, I mean, not, not that it matters to me either way, but if, if there's a slot, so to speak, and there technically is, they want, they want to do that, that way.
So, yeah, we just check out the logistics.
Okay. Unfinished business, discussion and action.
I just have a question on that. So then there would be three people on there from the police department?
Well, I look at it that what started as Victor and David, Victor has been elevated to an alternate status, as an alternate, meaning that if there's one of the five members is not there for the evening, he sits in as a voting member of the committee on both projects, not just the PD. And so that, in essence, it creates to me, in my mind, a vacancy for the second member exclusively to the PD project.
I think there's going to be a predisposition to vote with a specific manner of three out of five members having to be seated that night, including the alternate, in terms of what the police department may want.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary. I think we just need to fill it with a permanent position and then...
I think I agree with Rose. I mean, Victor, he can only vote if he's voting on the police. Right. I mean, because if it's, if it's, if all five members are there and he's there as an alternate, he doesn't get a vote. So he can vote on anything with the police facility? Correct. Because he's a... So it seems like we could just leave it that way. Yeah. Right, he would always have that vote. Right.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's do unfinished business, discussion and action. First is discussion and action, drainage pipe tie-in to public works from new police facility.
Yeah, those two items, I think we're just kind of tabling those. Those aren't ready yet, either A or B. We just kept them on as, so we didn't lose sight of them, and probably moved right to item C.
Okay, so I need, do I need a motion?
No, they just stay as...
Okay. All right, next is a resolution regarding referral Stanley T. Williams roof project to the permanent project billing committee.
Yep, then we can skip that one as well.
Okay, update on North Farm's park fence.
Yeah, so Jesse and Vin are both here and working on that.
Right, so following the last council meeting, I got a copy of the performance bond, and I sent a letter to the surety, and I'm waiting to hear back from the surety. Under the performance bond, there are steps that we have to follow in order to advance the matter, and the surety has certain rights. So once, if I don't hear from the surety this week, I'm going to make a phone call to try to reach out.
Okay. In regards to continuing the project and trying to move forward, I did reach out to the two bidders who bid on the job. There were only three bidders total originally. I received a written quote from one of the bidders that came in at 79,676. So I don't know if you remember the original numbers, but 35,672 was the original amount that we are going for, for the bond. So this is significantly higher. That's due to the price increase in the materials, increase in labor, time that we're doing it is now during the busy season for them as well. I did reach out to the other bidder. They did not give me a written quote as of yet. We were having issues with correspondence, but about 40,000. So both are fence companies. The higher one is the one that Fran is familiar with and has a good reputation in the field. The other one, I don't, I just don't know as much about, unfortunately. There is a time crunch on some of this. The quote is good for 10 days, and then it could vary because of the material costs. So we are seeing that.
But if we don't have an answer on the bond, that's going to affect the pricing.
Correct. So we probably, I refer to Vin, but I don't think we can do anything whatsoever.
Right, we have to wait until we communicate or in contact with the surety so we don't violate any of their rights. And basically, under the terms of the performance bond, the surety can remedy the default by hiring a contractor working with the town. And then the surety would pay the difference over, so the town hasn't paid anything to the vendor yet. The town would pay up to the bid price to any contractor that was hired by the surety to complete the job, and then the surety would pay above that. So that's how it's supposed to work. But we have to have a conference with the surety first.
So Vin, I think you might answer the question I was going to ask. Can we go after the company that was supposed to do it for the difference we have to pay?
No, because the surety would pay the difference. That's why we have a performance bond. So the town will be obligated to pay up to the original contract price. Which is the 35,672. And then, for the sake of this hypothetical, if the cost of the project was now $80,000, whatever that math turned out to be, $45,000, something like that, the surety would pay that. The surety then would likely go after its insurer, you know, to get a judgment against the surety. But that's then, the town's abided that way.
Okay.
Is it a bond, is it a sum cert, is it a cap on bond?
It's just a, it is a performance bond. And according to the terms of the bond... If the principal's in default under the contract and the obligee has declared the principal in default, the surety may remedy the default or shall complete the work through the principal or otherwise, arrange for the completion of the work by a contractor acceptable to the obligee, or waive its rights to complete and reimburse the obligee the amount of its reasonable cost to complete the work plus the contract balance. Now, the bond sum... The bond sum is 35,972.
Is that, or is that not the limit of what they would pay?
That would be the limit, actually, that is what the limit of what they would pay.
Okay, so in your hypothetical, if it was an $80,000 bill, they wouldn't pay 45,000?
They would, correct, they would pay 35,972, 40. And then the town would be obligated to sue the contractor for the balance.
So with that being said, do we have to wait until the bond is rectified, or can we just start?
Yeah, because they can elect to do the work, thinking they can do a change.
So that gives us an opportunity to have that second bidder provide something in writing in the meantime, just in case, right? And we can vet it.
Right, getting these quotes is important because that'll allow us to have immediate communications with the surety as to the available contractors that would be acceptable to us. And, you know, we'll report back at the next meeting.
But the issue becomes also, but there's nothing we can do about it, is that they have a very short timeframe on how long they're holding their prices. So we can have those prices now, but if we don't get any answers for the bond company until next week sometime, the bid is no longer valid, and we have to get new pricing.
But also, if any unknown bidders bid, like you commented, except one of the bids we're unfamiliar with, but it gives somebody some time to vet that contractor, see...
Yeah, unfortunately, the timing of this, Fran has been away on vacation, so this may be, the other bidder is perfectly, I just have not had that conversation with Fran about it at all. He may be familiar with this one, we just haven't spoken on it.
But were the, since there were only three companies that bid on this bid, were all three vetted originally? Because they're all, they all were original bidders, or did they only vet the one company that they awarded it to?
Yeah, I think it was just the top award. I don't know that the other two have been vetted. I certainly wasn't part of the vetting process for that.
I believe they were not, but I believe it was just the top one. The middle one did not have a performance bond, so they were automatically disqualified from the bid originally. I did speak to that contractor though, and she said she could get a performance bond, or they said they could get a performance bond. So unfortunately, when they filled up the bid packet, they had disqualified themselves, kind of. And then the third bidder was a company that we were already familiar with.
Who does that, the contractors? Is it whoever's doing the project, like Parks and Rec? Is it the town purchasing department? Is it Public Works? Who does the vetting?
Really, it's a combination, purchasing and the department to do that.
When we caucus last night, this came up. Correct me if I'm wrong, one of the reasons the prices might be higher is not only the price of the fencing, but also are they pricing in removal of what's currently there?
Yeah.
Because it was also brought up, that, and I don't want to throw more on his plate than we need to, but it was also brought up that Franny might be able to rip all that stuff out and maybe, you know, save us some money too, so...
Absolutely. And I, Franny's been away, so I haven't been able to have that conversation with him with all the other projects we have going on. I don't know what his availability is, and I didn't want to volunteer. The savings on that would be about $3,840, so it's not huge compared to the rest of the project. I mean, really, your fencing material is your main cost at over 63,000, just for the fabric, is what they call it. I learned this, but yeah.
But my guess is, is that because of what happened here, is that what's going on in the industry, their timeframe is probably different than what was in the original bid steps.
Correct, exactly. Yes.
Okay, right, so, I mean, with, no matter what company we choose.
Yeah, and the fencing material cost, as we discussed, continues to increase.
Jess, can you also do one favor too?
Sure.
Might be helpful to you as well, only because I'm putting up fencing now too. So there's also short on supply of material. Can you just check with them and see?
They've already verified that they can receive the material in eight weeks.
Perfect.
Yeah, I make sure.
You got all the answers, Jess.
I try to come to you guys prepared. This is not a situation I like to be in. This is not something that commonly happens. I haven't seen this happen in my career, not a long career, but enough of a career where I've been around, you know. But yeah, I'd rather come to you guys with the answer that I can, so.
Thank you.
So as of right now, when the contract's awarded, it's eight weeks? Like, so they're not going to order it, so it's eight weeks whenever it's awarded?
If the contract was awarded tomorrow, it's an eight-week lead time for that material to even come in. The contractor I spoke with said four or five days to get it in. It's not a long install process, it's the materials that continue to be a problem. But an eight-week lead time makes sense to me. The six-month lead time, or however long we're at now, does not make sense, and is not in line with what the standard of the industry has been, from what I can understand.
So there's no decision for us to make tonight until he gets...
I apologize, I hadn't spoken with Vinnie, so I wasn't sure.
That's fine.
I wanted the performance bond, but I want you to at least have the information.
Vin, how long do you think it'll take to get that spread away?
Once we make contact with the surety, it should move quickly. But, so hopefully I'll have something positive to report on your next view. But we will continue to work collaboratively, now in town.
And I will reach out to the second and get a more thorough quote in that, if I can get in contact with any other representative, and just be prepared about it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jess.
Okay, let's do new business, discussion and action. First is approval of job description for assistant town clerk.
Yes, so this is just a small revision that Lisa Valenti had asked for in terms of the job description. The first one is the current, where it says covers lunch hour, and she wanted to just amend that to say that the person may cover lunch hour in the assessor's office. So a simple, standard motion to approve that change, and that was all she had.
So I will make a motion to amend the job description of the assistant town clerk as presented.
Okay, motion is made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zanpano. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next we have a request to fund part-time ABO position.
Right, so this was discussed at the last meeting, and the council was looking for an impact, I think, in terms of the dollars and cents. So Anthony had put together the, what the impact would be in starting that person a month earlier than the projected fiscal year of July 1st. So that is the number at approximately $3,500.
Anthony, how much do we have in contingency?
$90,000.
90, okay.
$190,000.
$190,000, oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the starting of the assistant building official effective for June 1st, 2021, and that the appropriation be paid for out of contingency of approximately $3,500.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Pocicia. Any further discussion? Vote, please, Michelle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next we have a request from Board of Ed, Superintendent on the Auger House.
Yeah, so the superintendent had an email that's in your packet describing the fact that he's looking to relocate his program of nine students, aged 18 to 21-year-olds, to the Auger House, and is looking to provide the funding and the support and materials and appliances as they shift, and is looking at, it's a short-term, one to two-year proposition for that program. And they will have, be accompanied obviously by one teacher and two paras, and that would buy him time to find a permanent location.
Mike, who's ultimately responsible for the Auger House?
The town.
The town? What department does it fall under?
It's really, isn't, hasn't been assigned, other than Fran, really, Public Works has had oversight over it, if you will, in terms of, if you go back to 2013, '14, I first arrived, Rec Department had been using it for storage, who just kind of mothballed, put storage in there. But Franny has essentially been had the closest eye on and management of that.
And I had heard that maybe it's in the process of getting approved or for, as a historical site? Do we know where that stands, or if that is accurate?
It is accurate, we were pursuing that. Carrie, former planner, was pursuing that, and I got to a point where she got grant money to get it studied, and I think that's as far as it got, so I had to see where that...
Okay, and lastly, it's my understanding that this did not go through the Board of Education yet, so I would like to make a motion that we table this until it's been brought before the Board of Education, and they have a chance to digest it and figure out if it's something that they want to do.
I'll second that. Can I also have a question? What about the insurance issue? I mean, who's going to, I would think there has to be an issue of insurance, in terms of having students there. Is it, Board of Ed going to pick that up?
Well, I think that whatever the town, the town would, in conjunction with the Board of Ed, and whatever increased premium or whatever would happen there.
I was just worried about that part.
We would pick that up like any other municipal building.
Mike, there's no other municipal building in town that could be used versus altering the Auger House, which is a historic site? There's got to be a place somewhere.
Not to my knowledge. I don't know how much effort, I can't speak for the superintendent in terms of what his list wasn't looking, but, you know, storage and space is at a premium for us in many of our locations, you know, here, Rec Department, libraries. I don't know of any that would fit the bill. And, you know, talking about life skills, a house and a kitchen, you know, I think it fits well, and I think from my perspective, you know, it gets the, it's the building renovated. I think it fits well and I think from my perspective, you know, it gets the, it's the building renovated. It's, I think, a practical reuse of a building for a program that would benefit from it. So, you know, again, it would be first floor only, nothing to the, to the second floor. That would be, you know, roped off, cordoned off, what have you. So just be the first floor use only.
But while we, while it's out being reviewed whether it could be historical, wouldn't that limit the modifications that could happen to it?
My understanding is exterior. I don't know that there's any.
Well, exterior, wouldn't you have to put a ramp in to make it accessible? I'm sure there's codes for, you know, when you're putting school, or school education programs in a building. I think, you know, doesn't necessarily have to be toddlers, but I think there's probably code restrictions, I would think, where you'd have to put ramps in and different things. I'm just, I'm just asking the question. I have no idea.
No, I think you're right on the money. I think the building code and accessibility have to be addressed and whether or not there's going to be a conflict with historical preservation.
Right.
And I, I don't know the answer to that. We'll have, we'll have to track that down as well.
We don't have a lot of houses like that in town that are being protected. We'll say, I hate to see it changed in any real, real way that didn't have to be done for a temporary purpose, you know?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I think, I think if we're gonna do, I'm not sure, we've never gotten far as saying what the long-term plan for the Auger House would be and if it's having people or having meetings in there, I think at some point you got, you have to have an access and, you know, handicap ramp or something to modify. It's just whether or not the Historical Society or the Commission will allow or what they'll allow in terms of, without altering the historic nature of it.
Okay, so this will be sent back to the Board of Ed. Ron, I think you made the motion to table it.
Correct. I'll second it.
Well, no, it was already seconded. So we just have to take, we had discussions.
Can I ask one more question before we move on?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
There's a phrase in here which raises a question in my mind. The home has working kitchen appliances and bathroom facilities, which will be important to address the daily living and independent living skills for our students. Are these people intended to live there around the five?
No.
They just teach them the skills that they can cook and use, living skills.
I mean, right now.
So it's a daily program?
Yeah, in and out daily.
What, right now, what they do is they have one of the portables at Totucket Valley and in there they have, you know, a washing machine that it doesn't work. I mean, it just to give them, so they separated that classroom into like a bedroom section, a kitchen section. And they also go out into the workforce, so a lot of times they're not in the building because they go out to job sites that they're working on there, so.
The concern I have is the distortion to the property that might ruin its historical value.
Right.
One, and two, they're talking about doing a bunch of renovations, which equals money, and the program only has six or seven students in it. And we're talking about doing this for a year, maybe two. And so I don't know really if that washes out and that's why I would like it to go back to the board, just to, for them to consider it and talk about it.
You need to be careful thinking about the historical designation as a value. Really what it is is restriction.
Well, I don't want to ruin anything about, not so much a value.
It inhibits your ability to change the exterior of the building.
Right.
To raise it, if circumstances dictate it, it should be removed. There are complications once you get that designation. And frankly, I don't know what the upside is, other than you get a little plaque on the building saying you're historical.
But the, yeah, and to both of all of those points, the short-term use should be consistent with the long-term intention for this property, whether it's going to be a storage site forever or it's going to be a storage or it's going to be.
I mean, it might, it might not. I mean, if, I don't know who, I would imagine it's the Board of Ed, but to look at surrounding towns and is there someone we can team up with? And then you have a bigger program that has more, more ability to teach the students.
Because every, every district has to provide this type of program.
Okay. And they probably get a lot of money from the state for the program too. It isn't going to be totally costly to the Board of Ed.
No, right, but if they team, I'm just thinking if they teamed up with a neighboring town, there might be more to gain to all.
Most towns don't have that large a number of students in the program.
Correct, because they either age out or they get a job or something and they don't continue with the program. So.
And it's true also that they do spend a lot of time out in the workforce.
The Board of Ed could look at it and go from there.
Right, but that, that's totally their decision.
Yeah, go from there.
Right.
Okay. The motion was made by Councilor Plicchia, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion on this? Michelle, can we have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next is North Manford Police projected overtime overage.
If you look at the sheet, the over, there is already a fair amount of money in the, it's over in terms of the overtime account, $76,580. That is offset to some extent because there was a retirement, so it's offset to the point now where it's $59,852. What the, what the police commission is asking, however, is $10,000 in addition right now to their budget to provide some speed traps, some additional officers around. As we all know, we've had two fatalities on Route 80, particularly near Seahill. What I'm hearing is that it's a little out of control right now in terms of the speeding. I think we've all, we all talked, some of us talked about it before the meeting. We're experiencing that. And what the police really want to do is set up some areas, not just 80, but also 22, some areas of town, and really focus on trying to stop some of the speeding and what's been happening. And of course, we are upset about the fact that we had two fatalities. So they're looking for, even though the fact right now they're in the hole in terms of overtime, that they'd like to have, if possible, $10,000 to have that money, to use it wisely in terms of watching out what's happening in this town with traffic.
Is that from now till June 30th to cover?
Yes. Right now, they're, they're hurting in terms of they have a vacancy, so there is a lot of overtime going on. Some of the things have happened, so they'd like to really do a, have a concentrated effort right now.
All right, and for next fiscal year, is their projected budget for overtime adequate or is that?
You know what, I don't have that in front of me right now. Did you answer that question? I don't know if Anthony does.
But if they're.
It's a wild card. We have an health officer out on a long-term injury, as you mentioned, that was unforecast. You know, I talked to Kevin about the $17,000 shortfall that he's got there and he anticipates he may be able to cover that internally, but as a fallback, it would be a contingency appropriation at the end. So he doesn't have a firm number now. I mean, it's one of those things, do you, do you move, you know, $15,000 today and then have to move another chunk later on? Or just let him spend it out and then we'll cover at the end, move money around? So the $10,000 that Marie's talking about, if you know he's going to be theoretically potentially $17,000 in the hole, do you let him spend the extra 10 and then we just move 27, let's say, a contingency appropriation once all the numbers are in for June 30? That's why, I, you really don't know. And he goes, somebody else get out, get out sick tomorrow. So the 17 is only his best estimate as of today. It could be a lot worse. So there's two questions. There's how are we going to cover the 17? And my suggestion is just let him spend it the way he's doing it now. We'll do a contingency appropriation at the end. And then to Marie's point, do you want to authorize an additional 10 of contingency money for his concerted efforts to do on speeding traps? That's a, that's an issue for you guys. So there's two different issues. There's the 17 issue and then there's the additional 10 issue. The 17, I think we can cover contingency. He may be able to cover it internally in his own department. I'm not sure yet, but contingency is the fallback. We have money to do that, so the $10,000 is more of a policy issue for you guys to say if you want to spend an extra $10,000.
I would like to voice strong support for giving the money to the PD. There's been a, there's been, I get the text alerts to my phone whenever there's a motor vehicle accident on Route 80 or wherever in town and they are frequent all the time. I was telling some people a story earlier where I had to drop my truck off to be worked on one day and I had to cross the street on Route 80 to go to Cumberland Farms. And some guy was coming directly at me with his head down and looking in his lap and I actually had to jump over the guardrail. We have some serious issues on Route 80. I think the fact that the police department has identified that and they want to work on it and make our town safer, I, strong support. We all, you know, we all know about the deaths, you know, that we've experienced in town and it's, it's hurt a lot of people. So whatever we can do to address this and make things safer, in strong support of it.
Yeah, I am too, Ron. I think it's money well spent. $10,000 is a small amount for a life.
So I'd like to make a motion to add the $10,000 to the contingency account.
Sorry, second.
I have a question that, a question that might be answered by 9H, but you did mention about how there's a lot of overtime related to, you know, COVID response and at schools and stuff. Is there any sort of recovery or is that overtime at all, you know, factored into what funds we might try to recover from the federal?
I don't know that, that is a good question.
Yeah, we have, Anthony's been tracking a number from COVID-related. That's a piece of it. I think would have a bigger challenge. And again, when we get to it, I can explain, but in terms of the categories and getting guidance on what we can allocate funds to.
So some that may be recoverable?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, I think.
Anthony, the money from the speeding tickets, where does that go?
It's a combination of the state of Connecticut, it's the lion's share of it. We get a very small piece. I don't, there's a state statute that allows the town to get a piece of it, but the lion's share, I think, will go to the state.
Goes to the state? How much of it?
I do want to, I don't want to know something, I can find out for you though.
Is that because it's a state road?
Uh, if that's motor vehicle statute, so, okay.
As I was going to say, I mean, if we're paying them overtime, I'm sure they could bring in a lot of money in an hour giving out speeding tickets. And why not make North Manford known as a place, don't go speeding through it because you're going to pay? I mean, a lot of people drive up Route 80 to go other places, back and forth. They're coming right through our town, making our roads more dangerous. So why not just turn the police loose? Let them, let it be known, you go through North Manford, don't be speeding.
I'll get the exact statute reference for his part and where the ticket money goes.
Yeah.
Marie, is, does this mean there will be additional police on duty for traffic?
I think it'll be an overtime. Right, definitely. We only have some.
Because there will be additional personnel.
Not, well, not additional person, they're not hiring anybody, so they'll be doing additional work.
On the shit, there'll be additional people on the shit.
On the streets at one time.
Right, right.
Okay. Marie, you made, you made the motion?
Yeah, Marie made it.
Okay, and, and one second. Any further discussion?
Just to get started, we're not moving the money now. We're waiting until the end of the budget.
Yeah, we just said that they could spend it.
Gotcha.
And we'll take it from contingency whenever, yeah.
What do you want in the motion to be out of contingency period?
Yeah, just so that, that's the funding source.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next is review and possible approval of RFQ/P number 13, Material Testing Services for new North Manford High School from Permanent Project Building Committee.
Right, so it's in your packet that Q and M, 13 is the Material Testing Services and the meeting last night, the Permanent Project Building Committee took action to recommend TestCon as the preferred firm to take on material testing. So there was an analysis with Rusty, who's provided the backup material and he indicates in his narrative report that they had gone through the analysis. I think it's on page two, Material Testing. The Building Committee has recommended TestCon for this professional service. The design team evaluated the unit costs and overall costs for the service and determined that TestCon bid was lower in five of the six testing categories and their overall cost was lower on a leveled quantity evaluation. So that's their recommendation to go with TestCon for material testing. I think it's just a standard motion to award to TestCon.
I'd like to make a motion to award RF, RFQP number 13, Material Testing Services for the new North Manford High School to TestCon Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano. Any further discussion on this? Can I have a vote, please, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Rose, what was the name of that company?
TestCon.
Test?
Test, T-E-S-T hyphen Con.
It's in that additional material they have coming.
It's in this, it's in that.
Okay. All right, next we have review and possible approval of RFQ/P number 15, Independent Third-Party Code Review for the new North Manford High School from Permanent Project Building Committee.
Right, and this is the second one I mentioned and that it's highlighted in bullet number eight, Third-Party Code Review of the Phase Two Documents. The goal of this review process to facilitate the building permit process prior to the Phase Two PCR and the state OSCTR. Building Official, Farm Marshal Health Inspector, were consultant and in selection of this firm, the Building Committee has recommended Friar Associates for this professional service. And Q and M has indicated that they have worked with Friar before in numerous projects in this capacity and felt comfortable and more than incompetent in Friar services. The only modification was that the other firm, Versigi Consultants, was a bit lower. And so I was instructed by them to, to reach out to Friar and ask if they would meet that, that quote and they have agreed, so it would be to Friar Associates for the low bid of $19,500. So that's their recommendation.
I would like to make a motion to award RFQP number 15, Independent Third-Party Code Review for the new North Manford High School to Friar Associates at a cost not to exceed $19,500.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Gold. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
All right, next we have review and approval of bid specifications for RFQ/P number 19, Compensation Study.
Right, so, yeah, we're trying to move, trying to get out there to get some help with, with the process of a professional to come in and so first order of business would be to get this compensation study and RFQP out there. There are a few small firms that are interested in that. So I'm not sure how many are out there. We know of one that we know of, but it's the first start. And so this is the spec that we have outlined at this point. And again, there is no, no rush, but we're just trying to get it, get it out there to see what the, what the response will be.
Mike, I just have one quick question. Usually a town or an organization has a work week, the hours in a work week are standardized. I noticed the Public Works Director and Superintendent are both 40 hours when everybody else is 35. I'm just curious as to why they're different.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate. It's just sort of how it's been pursuant probably to the collective bargaining agreements and contracts.
I'm just curious, I, just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I, I don't know, the pool is.
Now, the police are a forty-hour operation also. Police and public works are forty-hour operations in the town, other employees are thirty-five-hour operations.
Am I wrong, or if, if it's at one time the town, all employees were, were forty, um, hours as well, or is that?
Not that I believe.
I mean, based on what you, you shared with us several months ago from CCM and comparing, it looks like there are certain positions that are out of black either although or what, what I, you know, I think it's a good idea to look at this to make sure they were competitive and, and, um, professional, so.
And who put this together?
Um, Anthony and myself with, with the help of, uh, one of the consultants. We reached out to and looked at other towns for sort of a cut and paste, uh, to put it together. Again, if you see something in here, um, it, it's not time sensitive. So if you wanted to bring it back, you know, if you wanted more time to look at it and bring it back for June first meeting, that's fine too. It could be something, again, um, we didn't have one in the file, so to speak, to, to pull out and redo. So we're looking at other towns and what they've done.
And it would, would it also look at, um, I, I'm assuming that it would also look at the healthcare benefits and the other, you know, supplemental benefits factored into the compensation.
Yeah, that's, and that's a big piece.
Are you in motion?
Nope.
Um, I would like to table, just have a little bit more time to look at it before we.
I would second that.
So, Mike, what, what consultant looked at this?
Uh, we, Randy Frank.
Which is?
Uh, Randy Frank.
So the work press?
Uh, female, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Independent, independent, uh, consultant. I, I, I believe connection goes, we, we used, um, I think once on, we, Randy Frank had come up a few years ago when we looked at the grant writer and we used her, I think, once. Uh, she'd been connected, is familiar with North Branford, I think even worked here at some.
She worked there, she was the purchasing agent, we were in the old building for a short time.
Okay.
I know some other towns are doing this right now too, so I don't know if you look at like, I think East Hartford is just recently did a compensation or was exploring that, so I don't know if you have some other companies. But I know East Hartford's one that just did this.
Did you say, let me second that. Okay, one. Marie did.
I did.
I think that was your motion, right, Marie?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
To, to table it and to the next meeting.
Okay. So, so Michelle, uh, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Uh, any further discussion on this? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, uh, next is coronavirus state and local, uh, physical recovery funds.
Yeah, so I, I, I've been trying to get as much information as I can and, and I put in the, um, the, sort of the fact sheet, if you will, and, uh, um, information on the flyer, um, and it really, it, it, it's, it's, it's still murky to me. Uh, and I, I'm trying to reach out and, and I'm gonna continue to do so. Uh, I, I've read and reread, uh, this, um, the different categories, um, you know, I'll take you through, you know, infrastructure. I was hoping for an opportunity there, um, in, in looking at, uh, water, uh, sewer and thinking infrastructure. Certainly they hope, would hope that they would have a, a, a broader definition. Uh, but it appears it's just water and sewer, not gas, uh, as, as might fit North Branford in a potential project he's funding for in terms of, or economic development. Um, and I thought maybe you could tie in, you know, gas main for, you know, business expansion. But when you tie that back to, uh, economic development, they're talking about economic development in the, in the form of, uh, loans or grants to, uh, businesses. So without any, uh, link to a federal or state program by which to run it, so it almost appears that each municipality or township is looking to create their own program, which would be, uh, quite, um, time-intensive to, to do. Um, and so, you know, again, that, the one piece we do have is, is the tracking on COVID that Anthony's had from, from the beginning and I, I think we're, I don't know. And what, what's the approximate number on, on COVID? I think that's our, our biggest problem is looking at any broad, broadband infrastructure, uh, I mean, is part of infrastructure, broadband, you know, uh, internet broadband, right? So, uh, a- again, um, in urban centers and, and, uh, other economically distressed, um, centers, uh, potentially talking about, you know, rolling out, spending money on broadband connection, you know, hotspots and, uh, free wifi, uh, potentially. I'm not sure that's an issue here in North Branford. I don't even know how you quantify that. So, um, you know, helping the tourism hotel industry. Uh, there are a lot more, uh, questions and answers and, um, I think it's gonna take more time. I just, I, I thought it would be important just to raise the issue to the council, uh, to look at this. Maybe if you take a read at this and, and you interpret it a different way, that, that might be helpful in, in terms of trying to find out, uh, how we can use these funds effectively. And of course, they've outlined, I think, just two, two areas in which you cannot use it and, uh, you can't, uh, spend it on, on, uh, pension funds or, or.
So what are some of the other towns doing in the area?
Uh, that, that, that is unknown. I'm gonna pose that question to the council of governments and, and make some, make some calls and also hopefully cost and CCM can be helpful in, in that, um, in trying to figure out ways in which they're going to, uh, define it. And again, uh, you know, pass through to us, uh, I don't know if there's going to be any audit or, uh, what, what recommend or criteria they're gonna be in terms of, uh, passing through. Maybe it comes straight to, to the town, to, to the state. Uh, they, they're saying it's coming this, this month. Uh, the first tranche, uh, first phase has come, comes this year, so it's paid over two years. You know, again, my understanding is there's two pots of money and there's direct funding at one point four million and then there's two point seven million that comes through the county. So, um, I think it's gonna be a challenge to, to find ways in which, uh, to, uh, find profit that fit the criteria, as vaguely as they, they, they define it. So anyway, uh, food for thought and, and just, um, I will continue, uh, with my pursuit and research and trying to figure out who has some information on this, further, further guidance.
Okay. All right, uh, next we have suspense list from tax department.
Suspense list, this is the annual exercise done by the tax collector, uh, to go through and identify taxpayers that have met certain criteria such as out of business, uh, such as deceased, such as unable to locate. Again, as a reminder, this does not wipe the bill off the books. It just moves it from one category of collectible to another category of collectible. Uh, we do get money periodically for people that are on the suspense list, not often, quite honestly. Uh, but all these people have gone through the marshal and the collection agency, all the, all the, all the years are out there. Uh, you remember the eighteen and nineteen list are with the, uh, marshal currently. They have till June thirtieth to pay those bills and we have seen people, uh, good results from the marshal and the collection agency will follow after that. So again, this does not wipe the bill off the books. Sometimes people see names they recognize, say, wait a minute, you can't, you can't locate this guy, he's my neighbor. The bill stays on the books. Uh, assuming he registers a name under, under the same name, it'll pop up at motor vehicle and he'll come in and pay his bill. So again, it's just a matter of cleaning up the list, not negating the bills, moving them to a suspense list.
Thanks. Next we have refunding opportunity.
We got, we got motion first.
I'm sorry.
There's a motion on that one to move the suspense list.
Oh, there is, okay. All right, somebody? No, good, good.
Yeah, aren't there also property taxes that, isn't it like a fifteen-year rolling thing?
Yes.
It drops off and one, the new year adds on, but one drops off, is that included in here?
Uh, no, those automatically per state statute, once the fifteen year comes up, if I just fall off at the end. I can get the number three too, what we actually wiped off for that. I think the two thousand four grand list is coming off this year, if the final month.
Thank you.
So they do, so they do eventually not pay any taxes because each year one is falling off. If they're consistently not paying for fifteen years, which some on the suspense list are, especially on real estate.
Well, real estate, real estate is the, is the anomaly. Real estate, we have liens. But we all know there's that certain real estate piece that we keep talking about that's been on there forever and we don't want to pursue that because it's contaminated and everything else. So ninety-nine point nine percent of the real estate we get, it's mainly motor vehicle and personal property, which we'll discuss later on in executive session, another one. But you're right, after the fifteenth year, if they don't pay, it just vanishes, per state statute.
But on the, the personal property and motor vehicle.
Right.
If a person has declared bankruptcy or is deceased or whatever else, they still go on the suspense list?
Yes.
Well, how are you ever gonna collect them if they filed bankruptcy? Are they still due, I mean, are they still owed? Can you collect anything or they just?
It depends on how the bankruptcy is, is, is worded. There's a certain date typically listed in the bankruptcy. Their debt prior to a certain date are totally alleviated. Um, and those, I think he does abate totally. These are ones that fall into that gray category where they're still collectible, but not likely, quite honestly, but.
So then they sit there for fifteen years?
Fifteen years and then they disintegrate.
I'll make the motion, be it hereby resolved, if the North Branford Town Council accepts the recommendation that the tax collector agrees to put the following taxpayers on the list provided into the suspense list pursuant to CGS twelve dash one sixty-five.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilor Angelon, uh, Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next we have refunding opportunity.
I believe I had mentioned to you earlier that we were gonna try to tie, uh, the bond issue for the schools slash police department into a refunding opportunity that has arisen. And this basically is the refunding opportunity of the two thousand fifteen bonds. And the authors, the, um, bond resolution prepared by Robinson and Cole that needs to be adopted, uh, to make that happen. As of right now, our estimate is we're gonna save about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars in debt service.
Uh, that's net after fees and everything?
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council adopts the attached resolution entitled A Resolution With Respect To The Authorization Issuance And Sale Of Not Exceeding Three Point Five Million Town Of North Branford, Connecticut, General Obligation Refunding Bonds In Its Entirety And Instructs The Treasurer Finance Director To Report Back To The Town Council The Final Amount Of The Transaction And Resulting Savings That The Town Will See From This Refinancing.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Joe.
Joe. Uh, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fawnin. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, Anthony, next is appropriation transfers for year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one.
Very simple, a couple of, uh, transfers presented by the Recreation Director, uh, to accomplish some things like some signs and mulch, um, replacing some of the kitchen equipment at the senior center, different chairs and tables, and reducing a piece or two of finance, of fitness equipment that is, uh, older and no longer fixable.
I know Jess is, Jess, is this from, I see it's coming out of part-time. Is this the position that wasn't filled due to being closed because of COVID?
Part of that money is the position that we didn't fill as well as, as you know, our fitness center hasn't had it reopened and wasn't open for a large portion of the time, so we have the front desk wages as well. Um, so you'll see part of the transfer from part-time wages and then the other part of the transfer from, um, pension and security, which I had talked to Anthony about and because of that we'll have the opening. We will have additional transfers, but this is so that I can at least do, um, within the budget.
So you can get the stuff now before you're in?
Correct, correct, yeah, and, and start to improve stuff. We have a wonderful senior pregnant coming up, so I'd like to, you know, get some chairs and make it nice.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the appropriation transfers as presented.
Second.
Okay, all right. Uh, motion made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano. Uh, any further discussion? Can I have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next is financial report, uh, as of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Financial report, again, the top line, as we had hopefully predicted, the tax department with those delinquents going out and demands, uh, they have outpaced last year ninety-nine point one, or ninety-nine point oh last year. They were lagging for a couple of months as we delayed with the, uh, demands and delinquents going out. Overall revenue, ninety-seven point nine, ninety-seven point oh last year, ahead of schedule. The expense side of the house, less than one percent ahead and the largest player being the board bed, they were about a percent and a half ahead of last year. Uh, so the report basically is unremarkable on the expense side, the same departments that have over expended, the technology, again, a lot of those are one-time costs as we do things like implement, uh, cameras and different buildings that don't have them and, uh, some other disaster recovery type expenditures. And animal control was a function of last year's purchase order, uh, exceeding the amount, uh, not enough to cover the amount from last year's overage. One thing I wanna, I wanna pass on to you guys is, I had mentioned to you maybe a meeting or two ago, when we talked about our, our OPEC fund. And the State Office of Policy and Management puts out their municipal fiscal indicators. And this one just came out at the end of April and it has the data as of June thirtieth, uh, twenty nineteen. And what I want you to do is to, if you flip the pages open, just stay on the, on the second or third page, I have a star where North Branford is. And you'll notice to, to the right, hundred percent of the contribution we make. And two columns in from that, at this point in time, we were fifty-one percent funded. Everybody following me?
Yeah.
All right, now turn to the very last number, very last page. Statewide average was nine point one percent. Okay, so as I mentioned to you, we should be proud of that fact that our OPEC fund is very well funded. I think I made the comment at that meeting. And the average is eight, uh, sixty-three percent of the pot, of the, uh, contribution, we make a hundred percent. So that's a testament to you guys giving us the, the tools to make this happen and to keep us, you know, on top of our finances. It doesn't happen, you know, in a vacuum and I appreciate, you know, not working for a town where the governing body is, does, plays game with it. And there's a lot of towns that, that happens. As we, as you can see on here, there's a lot of towns that have zeros. You know, they don't have any funded at all. I mean, look at the, the, on the first page, the second one down, not to mention the name of the town, because it had an A, but thirty-three million dollars with zero percent funded. The numbers are mind-blowing. So again, I, I know I mentioned to you when we talked about the OPEC, um, assumptions a couple of meetings ago that we were, we were well off and I just wanted to show you this. Remember, uh, the, the one we passed out with the last name, we were eighty-three percent at the end of June twenty twenty. So again, at this point, this was June twenty, uh, thirty-nine, June thirtieth, twenty nineteen numbers. We were, you know, fifty-one percent compared to a nine percent average, nine point one percent average. So it's good news.
Anthony, I got a quick question for you. Just having a discussion, uh, last night with a few people and, um, I'm just curious as to one of the benefits. a few people and I'm just curious as to one of the benefits of doing a lot of the projects that we're doing right now was the fact that the interest rates are so low.
Yes.
And last week, the inflation rates came out, inflation's going up.
Yeah.
Does that, first question is, does that affect our bonding?
Yes. The market in general affects our bonding. So the inflation rate will definitely, will definitely play into it, no doubt about it.
So I, I remember when we first looked at the numbers, we were going to phase in over like five years before we actually, we were going to do a bunch of like small borrowing just, just to phase it in.
Right.
Is that something we want to reconsider to capitalize on the bonds being low now?
Well, if, if we, the resolutions that we passed the last meeting, we are going to issue ten million of bonds and do thirty-five of notes.
Okay.
So our concern, we wanted, we wanted to find a number that didn't skew the debt service, we wanted to keep kind of a level debt service. So the ten million of, of bonds is like a sweet spot. It won't impact it drastically. And we have to put a little bit of money aside, not as much as I wanted to, but we have to put a little bit of money aside to solve.
We're refinancing, you're getting some of that back.
Yeah, true, true, true. But, but then you say that, that's a good point because in the, thank you for bringing that up, Rose. In next year's budget, we didn't budget any of that interest. At the time, we weren't going to do that. So we're going to save a little bit of money in next year's bonds, but we're going to incur some interest.
Right.
So we're still about maybe break even where we're supposed to be, but there is a, there is a little bit of savings. But to get to your point is, we're trying to capitalize on that low interest rate now, the twenty-year rate, and do about ten million of that level. And then we'll do notes for the other thirty-five and roll those over a year from now. So it, it's kind of trying to find that spot where you could issue all, you know, sixty million now, but then it's below our debt service to smithereens. So that ten million kind of gives us a nice kind of even flow in debt service without too much of a bump. So we, we are taking advantage of it now, it's the bottom line. We are taking advantage of the current market. Again, subject to change, we now in August, who knows what's going to happen?
Right, man.
You know, if the inflation keeps going crazy and the market goes crazy, who knows how it's going to react, but.
Anthony, I have another question. I've been asked to have on the agenda the, an update on that RFP for the audit services, the financial reporting. I told that, I was told that there was a question about what you sent out or did you want to change it?
Well, there's a, the question, one of the people that called us and said, the way the wording of that RFP was, I believe that, I don't remember the front, any and all, I believe the word, it was, I forget the exact wording, any and all financial transactions over a three-year period. So the response from this person was, you want to look at every financial transaction over a three-year period? He said, you have over a million dollars. You're not a set million dollars on this. Do you want us to do a sampling? And said, you know, we have industry standards, we look at the size of the volume and this and that. And, you know, for, you know, whether you, what do you do, a twenty percent sampling or a fifty percent sampling or a three-quarter sampling? And that's all been driven by dollars. So, you know, the, the feedback came back saying, okay, you have out there, you want every single transaction in three years looked at. That's, it's not realistic. What do you, you know, what, what percentage of cushion or safety do you feel comfortable with? And we'll bid accordingly that way. You know, do you want to test twenty percent of the population of transactions, fifty percent of the population of transactions? What numbers? There's got to be some fine tuning to it because as it's written now, it would just be this monstrous task that would cost us, you know, tremendous amount of money. And I guess it boils down to what comfort level do you guys have? If you have a number in mind, you know, is, is a twenty-five percent of, of the population sampling good enough? Do you want fifty percent? Do you want, what number do you have in mind for them to come back with it, with a proposal that you're not going to laugh at?
In, in the regular audit that they do every year, what do they use for a sampling? What percentage do they use for a sampling?
I could find out. I don't know the exact number, but I don't know.
The other, the other thing I was going to suggest too, just for comparisons, to try to potentially save money, is talking to our auditors, our annual auditors and asking them if we added on.
Yeah.
A focused, you know, if we were just looking at really a handful of accounts that we were concerned about.
Yeah.
How much would it be just to add on to the annual audit, you know?
Yeah.
A more, a deeper dive on.
Sure.
Maybe those, those five areas.
That, that might be, that might be more economical in the end.
Yeah.
To have somebody come in from scratch, do all their sampling.
I mean, I think we should still find out what it's going to cost for.
Right.
You know, to have somebody from the outside, but just as a comparison.
Yeah, no, that's a valid point.
Um, I think that might be worth looking at as well.
So I'll find out for you what the current, the auditors use as a sampling now?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's dollar driven as well. Like a certain over X amount of dollar transaction, they'll, they'll look at more than like, say, a ten-dollar item kind of thing, so.
Right. So you can just find those parameters.
Okay.
On the regular audit and then we can kind of judge for the forensic.
Okay.
Anthony, thank you for explaining that, bonds.
Oh, not a problem.
Appreciate it.
It's, it's, it's a huge issue because, you know, if, if you, ideally you do all sixty million dollars today and you'd save a ton of money.
Right.
But again, in which our debt service would go crazy and you couldn't afford it. So you save on interest, but you, you kill yourself a debt service, so.
Balancing it.
It's like, it's like ten million is about the sweet spot where we can kind of get the debt service somewhat level and, and capture some of the savings.
Anthony, do you want to, on Scott's, what is, what is the special education fund? A motion on the, from Scott?
For which?
The special education funds.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's, that's the same issue as the Auger House. I don't know that that went to the Board of Ed.
As of our last meeting, it had not.
Right, so.
It was interesting because I, I so forwarded to Mike, there was a couple of towns in my finance department lists or that had a similar situation. They said, you know, geez, the, the town gets the special ed excess money and the Board of Ed pays the bill.
But they're funded at a hundred percent.
So there, there was appears to be this inequity, like, you know, you're paying the bill, we're getting the money kind of thing. So I know in the past, you guys have made a motion to take that special ed excess and give it back to them.
Because there was a few years where they weren't funded at a hundred percent.
And that was, you get them back as their increase for the subsequent year.
Correct.
So, yeah, Mike had mentioned there was, there was, you know, concern about doing that again this year. But as of now, that money that's come in is sitting in the, in the board, in the town's books as revenue.
And, and how much is it?
Like eighty-nine, like eighty-nine thousand, I think, or eighty-five or something?
No, that was what was left from last year's when we appropriated. So there was like a hun, we appropriated a hundred twenty thousand from last year and at the budget time, there was still eighty-five thousand left of that one twenty.
Is that what he's asking for? He's asking?
Well, he's asking, well, he's, no, he's asking for this year's. You know, there's a new number that comes out every year. So he's asking for this year's special ed excess cost grant money. We already gave him last year's, but he didn't spend it all as of April, as of budget time.
We receive one hundred and thirty-nine, seven oh one.
Okay.
This year, special ed.
Hey, Anthony?
Yes, sir.
So looking at this OPEB?
Yep.
So our liability is seven million, four seventy-five.
Correct.
So we've got about thirty-eight, or excuse me, three point eight million.
Unfunded at that point, correct.
Funded, right?
Funded, yeah, exactly.
Right, so that's fifty-one percent?
Correct.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand this. Okay.
All right. It's, it's, it's along the same line as a pension. You have a liability based on your employees, what they've accrued as, as a value, and then you try to pay it off over time to that, at one point in time, hopefully, we all live that long.
Right.
It's a hundred percent funded and we're all happy.
But that percentage has gone up.
Yeah, because we're eighty-three at the last.
Yeah, that's what I thought, our last.
So this, this is June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, we were fifty-one percent. So as Rose mentioned, we were eighty-three percent June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So we're making really good strides. And again, if you look at these numbers, are these numbers accurate? There isn't, I'm asking this, there's, there's, like you said, there's a lot of zeros. A lot of zeros. And, and it just, um. It baffles your mind. Right. It baffles my mind that how, again, it's, it's political. All right, let's call a space to space.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood what I'm looking at.
Let me see, well, look, it's interesting, well, look, look at, not to mention the name, but again, with H. They're negative point four funded, negative point four funded. Okay? Not only are they zero, they're, they're below zero.
Okay, so, but we're, we're doing good.
We're good, okay. Yeah, we're doing, that's, that's the bottom, we're doing good. Not to mention that town.
The retirees are just going to get a book of food stamps.
Thanks for not saying the name, Anthony.
Mike, Mike, I have a question. Weren't we, weren't we going out or to look at engineering services and HR services? Or where are we on that?
We have, those are in. We have seven, I believe, seven firms that respond to engineering services, yeah. So Kurt is, and I will look at it and, and of course, when, when Fran gets back, he'll be looking at those as well.
And, and how many applicants did you get?
Um.
For the position? Because I thought we did them concurrently, correct? We ran them both at the same time?
Yes, and then we, and had one and went back out again for, for the applicants, so.
So we're working on, on both of these items?
Simultaneously.
HR and, and, okay.
Yep.
But on the engineer, we might, if, if we only had one applicant and they put it back out to advertise, we might not have an option to begin with if we don't have.
I'm sorry, but, yeah.
Or how do you do that?
You're right. And I, I'm, I'm saying one, I think, I think viable candidate. And in total, I think we may have three to four.
Okay.
And one of those is, is international, so.
How they want to work?
Well, it came from a foreign country, so.
Do we, Mike, do we know, do we have a final date for him?
June thirtieth?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's in the works. But I, I think seven for sure. And, and again, I haven't gotten into it, but.
Okay.
Some of the names I saw were certainly reputable and, and I think they all are, but it's just.
And, and also one other item, the clerk that works for the police department, that's in motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it's out on the street.
Okay, you all set?
Yes.
Okay, uh, next is approval of tax refunds.
So moved.
Second.
Did you get that, Michelle?
I sort of did, yes. Wish I brought my glasses, I'm sorry.
Need a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next is set mill rate for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
Basically, as you know, the, it was an overwhelming turnout for the bunch of referendum vote.
All one point two percent of those people.
So the motion is to approve it at the thirty-three point one-four mills and authorize the manager to sign the rate book to collect taxes.
I'd like to make.
I'm sorry, is that, we were looking at a point, what was it, like point four four decrease? Is that?
That's correct, point four four decrease in the current year.
And that's, that's still holds true?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council hereby sets the mill rate for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year at thirty-three point one-four mills and further authorizes Michael T. Paulus, town manager, to sign the rate book for the collection of taxes on July first, twenty twenty-one, and January first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Gold. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next is citizen statements and petitions.
Well, it wouldn't be proper for me not to commend you. I'm always complaining to you. So, I mean, you guys, again, I asked Rose if she could look at this, find more money, because she found more money in the budget last time. Maybe she helped me with this. You guys have stepped up to the task. You gave a lot of time away from your families and for no pay. And again, we look good. That's the history of this town. We're financially smart, we don't go overboard, we've got great employees working for the town. And again, I'm proud to be a citizen of North Branford. And we're going to move forward and we're going to get through these next couple of years. And, but it was your guidance in your many hours. We don't see all the hours you put in, we just see you here. But I know it's, it's never easy, businessmen included, right? Tax time, the five-minute phone calls every hour.
Yeah.
Take away from your production. So we appreciate that, at least I do. I hope the other citizens will. But I mean, it's, it's, again, one of the worst-looking years and we landed on our feet and we had a budget cut, I mean, a tax cut. So thank you again and keep up the work and slide into another year. And they seem to be going quicker and quicker. I don't know why. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have some Facebook comments for you, Mr. Mayor. On the topic of the speed traps, Bob Whitworth said, speed traps, absolutely not. The two fatalities in the investigation reveal excess speed was the primary cause. Visible patrol itself is worthwhile, hiding in a bushes is not. This expenditure is a waste of money. And traffic enforcement should not be revenue-focused. Antonio Giuseppe said, as, as stated, speed traps are a waste of our tax dollars. More overtime for cops to sit around and do nothing behind the bush.
Nice. Okay, thanks, Anthony. Anything else?
I just want to say that speed traps, or my comments earlier, were solely based on public safety and had nothing to do with revenue, so.
Thanks, Mark. Okay. Come out of the council meeting.
The motion to go into executive session to include the town manager and town attorney and Anthony and, and town finance director.
Second.
Okay, nope. Did you get that, Michelle?
I didn't get it.
Councilor Angeloni.
Uh, Tom.
Oh.
Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, Zampano. Let's take five minutes, two minutes?
Two? We're, you're doing good. It's nine sixteen, so let's try.
That's why I changed it from five to two.
Two, you got two minutes.
Thank you, Joe.
How, how did you take that?
I almost, I was, are we off camera?
Uh, no.
Not quite yet.
I'm going to wait. Because I, I was this close to saying something and I'm like, bit my tongue.
I'm a hundred percent behind what I said, a hundred percent.